Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting on March 25th, 2024. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on April 2nd, 2024, at 10:30 a.m. And I always tell them, 10:30 a.m. is when they start the planning items, so it's approximate time for any review. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms, which are available in the back of the commission room here. Roll call, we're missing two gyms called in, and we already knew that Kevin was going to be absent, so, but the record still indicates. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of March 11th, 2024, that are in their packets? If so, the Chair would address a motion.
I move for you to approve the March 11th minutes.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the March 11th, 2024 minutes of the Pennington County Planning Commission. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Same comments exist for the approval of the agenda for today's meeting. Have you had a chance to review that agenda as submitted to you in your packets? If so, the Chair would address a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second to approve the agenda for the Pennington County Planning Commission March 25th, 2024 meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. Jason, you're going to handle the consent agenda. Thank you.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thedison, Assistant Planning Director. Following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any Planning Commissioner, Staff member, or Audience member for separate consideration. Findings of this Planning Commission on certain items for this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, who will make the final decision. Agenda item number four is Conditional Use Permit Review 95-31 for Rapid City Reclamation Facility, Water Reclamation Facility, to review a water reclamation facility to allow expansion of the facility and renovation for a portion of the old facility, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 95-31 with conditions. Agenda item number five is Conditional Use Permit Review 06-33 for Zachary and Chelsea Burke, to review a customary home occupation in animal hospital, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 06-33 with conditions. Agenda item number six is Conditional Use Permit Review 16-31 for Black Hills Raptor Center, to review a bird education and health facility. Staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 16-31 with conditions. Agenda item number seven is Conditional Use Permit Review 21-16 for Kyle Brown, to review a caregiver's residence, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 21-16 with conditions. Agenda item number eight is Conditional Use Permit Review 21-49 for Kyle and Claire Schmidt, to review a guest house, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 21-49 with conditions. Agenda item number nine is Conditional Use Permit Review 22-49 for Leslie and Tina Lawson, to review a caregiver's residence, and staff recommends to continue Conditional Use Permit Review 22-49 to the April 8th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Agenda item number 10 is Conditional Use Permit Review 23-01 for CalSD LLC, Tina Roberts, to review a multiple family dwelling, and staff recommends approval of Conditional Use Permit Review 23-01 with conditions. Agenda item number 11 is Conditional Use Permit Review 23-05 for Joseph and Madison Hamel, to review a vacation home rental. Staff recommends to approve Conditional Use Permit Review 23-05 with conditions. Agenda item number 12 is Conditional Use Permit Review 21-10 for Hadley Eisenbys and Kristen Broost, to review a shed as a principal use, and staff recommends to continue Conditional Use Permit Review 21-10 to the April 22nd, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. And lastly, my, agenda item number 13 is Mining Permit Registration, MP 20-11, for Pete Leen and Sons, to register an existing mining operation, and staff recommends to continue to the May 28th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you, Jason. Does the staff at this time desire to have any item pulled from the consent agenda?
No, sir.
Anyone from the commission that would like to have an item pulled from the agenda? The audience, I'm going to talk, I actually have three speaker request forms on the mining What I would like to do first, let's pull, we need to pull the item first. And would you, folks that are here, because we're talking about moving it to the May 28th, and now that you're here, I certainly would think you'd want to make a decision whether you want to go ahead and speak now for the record. It will be included in the record for the May 28th meeting. Would you rather talk now, or wait till the 28th? Any one of you? I have, I'll just go through, so we make sure we get it right. Because we have no desire to have you have to come twice if you're here and you don't think you might make the 28th meeting. I have, Justin Steele, would you rather speak today? Okay, we're going to pull that item then, Justin. Thank you. We're going to pull number 13. Chair, address a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda for items number four through 12.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second to approve the consent agenda with items four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried. We're on item number 13.
Cody Sack, Reverend O'Planner, I guess, staff doesn't have anything, so if it's just for public comment, item 13 is Mining Registration, MP 20-11, is to register an existing mine.
Okay, it was included in your recommendation, and we didn't really hear, I didn't hear that come out, but it was certainly to get the advertising done appropriately, and you don't feel that is the case today?
No, they have 50 some lots that are covered under current construction permits for Pennington County and mining license for the state of South Dakota. Some of those lots weren't included in the advertising, so the item needs to be re-advertised. Those letters have to be sent to properties within a half mile, and there's quite a few of them, so to meet that deadline, it got pushed out to the May 28th meeting.
Okay, and that's what I was going to include, was I understand it is certainly relative to the property descriptions, legal descriptions that need to be included in those mailings.
Correct.
Thank you. Now, we have several people, we'll go down the list here. Justin, yours just happened to be on the top for the first time, so please introduce yourself just for the record, and, huh? Yes, right up here. You've got the spotlight.
My name is Justin Steele, and I live pretty close to the mining operation. As it's been getting closer, the force of the blasts have been, you know, increasing, and they're starting at the point where every now and then they seem to have wildly different forces, and some of them have knocked stuff off the walls, and I'm just a little concerned about my foundation, and I just want to make sure they're, you know, doing everything in a manner that is still going to keep my foundation from cracking, so, just a little concerned about what they're doing to protect us from that, or, or anything, and I don't know if this is the format for that, but I figured I'd.
Certainly is, Justin. We're going to have questions, but I have one right off the top. When you say it seemed to increase, increased from when they moved to the other side of Sturgis Road from the other, or what are we talking here, time-wise?
Well, it's hard, it's hard, so, some of the blasts aren't that bad, but some of them seem pretty extensive, and there are some that have really shocked me when I'm at the house, and it's just like, oh, that is a lot more than I was anticipating being close to the house. And, so much so that I was thinking about trying to find a little home Richter scale, just so I could see what those are, but, but those are super expensive, and I can afford that, but, it doesn't seem like there's a standard amount that they let it get to, so, and I, I can't tell how far away those are from, but since they have crossed the road, it's been, some of them have been pretty, pretty big, so, and I already have some foundation issues, so it's a concern to me, because I can't afford to fix those if they, if they start getting bad. But, I didn't know if this was the format for that, or, or I'd just like to know what they're doing to make sure it's under an amount that is going to keep my property safe.
I'm going to have Cody come up, because we actually do receive that forwarded from the state in regard to blasting requirements, is that not correct?
Correct. There are blasting requirements under, by the state of South Dakota for certified blasters. I would recommend that you reach out to Pete Leen, and talk to Pete Leen. This, I just want to stress that this permit, it's not an expansion, they're already allowed to mine on properties. This is just, in 2020, our ordinance changed, and any existing mining operation is required to register their limits of what their construction permits or state mine license permits were, and that's what they're doing. So if there's any complaints or concerns, I'd say, reach out to the state of South Dakota, reach out to Pete Leen, or send the Planning Department, like an email or anything like that, and we can address some of those complaints, or issues.
Other questions for Justin before you?
Question, if anybody's driving a pickup from this outfit past your place, have you ever stopped and talked to any of them?
I have not. I haven't had any problems with the trucks or anything that have been coming through. They've been.
But I mean, as far as somebody that works there?
I have not.
Okay.
I just, I didn't know what this was going to be about. I've never been one of these, so I didn't know if this was, I didn't know if this was that.
Well, you got to start someplace.
But, thank you.
Justin, thank you for coming. Our next one is Barbara Landers. Where's Barb? She was here. We're going to hold that. Barb was here, she might have left when she saw that it was going to be continued. We all know Barb, I'm sure, don't we? Who she is, I don't see her right now. Please introduce yourself just for the record, I'm sorry.
Thank you, my name is Jeff Celine. I've been living next to the mine for 23 years now, and I'm talking, they're my next-door neighbors, best neighbors I've ever had in my life. They don't look in my windows at night, right? They don't come bother me about what's going on on my property, and I just wanted to let you guys know that. I understand your blasting concerns. They blast 50 yards from my house. No problems, they have seismographs right up next to the property line, that they can monitor that, and for any time I've had a concern, they've addressed it with me. You know, you bring it to them in a responsible manner, and they will, they will talk to you, and make sure you understand what's going on, and they'll, they'll do what they can to accommodate any of your needs. For all the mining stuff that I've seen in my interactions with them has been stellar. They reclaim very well, there's a lot of rules they have to follow, and as far as I know, they follow them. So I just, I just wanted to let you know that I've got experience with them blasting right next to my property, I'm talking 50 yards away, and, and they've been very good about it. The blasts are sometimes, they shake pretty good, you know, and that's the method of, from what I understand, the way the blasting is done, the energy has to go somewhere. If they're starting a new hole, it goes everywhere. If they start on an edge, it moves in toward the opening. So, that, they do have that, but they, they are very concerned about the amount of blast and monitoring it. So, if you all have any questions for me, I'd sure appreciate it.
That's what I was going, any questions for Jeff? Go ahead.
I'm familiar with coal mines in Wyoming, and they, they sound a horn before they blast. Do these guys do anything like this?
I think I've heard the horn before, usually it's for the conveyor belt. The conveyor belt, you know, undergrounds, under Sturgis Road, is, you know, I can throw a rock, I don't have a real strong arm, but I can throw a rock and hit it, I suppose. They do that for their safety. I don't hear them do the horn before they blast, but I've had it where I've been on the roof of my house when I was reshing them a few years ago, and the blast supervisor sent somebody down, saw me on the roof of my house from where they were doing it, they sent somebody down to make sure I knew they were going to blast, they didn't want to startle me, have me fall off the roof. They've also been very good about if you wanted a phone call before a blast to tell you, hey, we're going to blast at 1:30, and then you can at least be ready for it. I do some machine work on my property, work to high tolerances, and it's nice to know when they're going to blast, so I don't have a machine turned on that might get shook. But, you know, for, I've got, since May of '21, I've been living next to them, and they've been, they've been very good, so I got a little experience with it.
Well, that's all I've got.
Other questions for Jeff?
That was kind of my question too, about notification. Do they have like a website that says we're going to be blasting, or it's?
I don't know, you'd have to talk to them. Whenever I have concern, I call them up and let them know, you know, I'd like to speak to somebody or whatever, they've been very good about, about talking with me. I don't know about websites and everything, but I'm sure if you want to, if I wanted to get phone calls, I don't get them anymore. They blast far enough away where it's, I know that they blast, but it's not like when they were 50 yards from my house, so I don't get the phone calls anymore, it's a waste of their time and mine.
That's all I have. Additional questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Hey, thanks.
William Meredith. Just introduce yourself, please.
I will, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is William Meredith, I go by Bill, Bill Meredith. My wife and I are in the process of completing construction on a new home just off of Sunridge Road, and we were just notified of this in the recent months. This is our first time of coming to a meeting like this, we have obviously some concerns, we have a significant investment in a new well, and a new home. The last thing we want is for that home to be damaged by mining activity, so the blasting and some of the issues that Justin brought up earlier are certainly concerns of ours. I'm curious where we might be able to get in-depth information regarding how they manage seismographs or equipment that's measuring vibrations off their site, but my house is brand-new, and I want to establish a baseline, that if any of those issues come up, I'm going to be able to address them with Pete Leen clearly, so, I'm looking for, this information, frankly, is quite vague to me, it's just a picture, it doesn't really give me specific information as to where things are happening and how they might impact my property, but I wanted to come out on the record here, saying that I do have some concerns about how this might impact my home.
Bill, just a second, I'm going to have Cody come up and at least give you his number, and he'll find out, I think, what you're asking here, in other words, you need some baseline on the blasting, that was one for sure. Anything else that Cody couldn't?
Well, I don't, I don't fully understand what the mine operations are regarding potential for contamination of groundwater or any of those sorts of things. I have a very expensive well that I just put in, and I don't know what.
You'd like to know who to contact, get that information, go ahead.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd contact the, why not contact Pete Leen, if you have any concerns again, and then you could contact the state of South Dakota, the Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources, and see if they have any of that data. I don't have any of that data. I'm not aware of any requirements for a baseline seismograph and anything like that. Again, what we're here today for, and what's continued till May, they're already allowed to mine on these properties, we're just registering that. Any concerns or anything like that for groundwater and wells, I'd contact the state of South Dakota, and they handle all of that.
Okay, that help you some, Bill? No answers today, but I'm saying at least so that you have some direction.
I think there should, I think there should be some credence given to the need for, because of the proximity of a number of homes, not only people who've been living with it for years, but, but some of us that are new to the game here, I think we need to make sure, or, there needs to be consideration given to protect our foundations and our homes in our pretty expensive investments in this area, so, if there're not any requirements for monitoring, or seismographic monitoring of explosions, there sure as heck should be, and I think this is a forum we need to address that.
Thank you. Questions for Bill?
One question, Bill. Did you have any idea that there was a mine there, and that there were explosions when you built the house?
No, sir. This is the first notification that I've gotten. I bought my property just off of Sunridge Road in April of 2019, and I had no idea this was here.
Okay, that's all I have, sir.
Any other questions for Bill? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Cody, anything to follow up on? Chair would address a motion. Item number 13.
I move we continue item number 13 to the May 28th meeting.
Second.
Moved in second to continue per staff's recommendation, MP 20-11 to the May 28th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carried.
Agenda item number 14 is Planned Unit Development Overlay, COPU 24-0002, and is to allow a planned unit development overlay for agritourism on the subject property. The applicant is Daniel and Shonda Knuf. This is located west of New Wonderwood along Highway 1416. This will, this is 34.56 acres, in an agriculture zoning district. There is 100-year special flood hazard area on the property, and their access will be off of 1416. So the zoning ordinance lists the, lists standards for planned unit development overlay districts, they are listed above, and along with those standards, they also need to meet the seven criteria of a conditional use permit, which is also listed on screen. The applicant is requesting to utilize agritourism in agriculture zoning district. Agritourism is an activity carried out on a farm or ranch that allows members of the general public to view or participate in agriculture activities. The applicant would like to specifically use the Harvest Host program, which is an RV membership program that allows self-contained travelers to overnight at locations across the country. This planned unit development would include a single-family residence, accessory structures, three recreational vehicle sites, onsite tours, and the sale of baked goods and produce made on the farm. The proposed single-family residence will be occupied by the applicants, and agricultural land use will be maintained throughout this process. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as the uses requested are in harmony with conditional uses over the agriculture zoning district, so staff recommends approval with 21 conditions.
Questions for Megan?
I have one. Agrotourism, I find that interesting. Accessory structures, what, what will that include?
That'll include a barn, a shed for storage. The barn specifically will be built, from my understanding, to allow people to come in and view the animals. That would be related to the agritourism, but otherwise, they'll still have the same uses of the underlying agriculture zoning districts, so as long as the accessory structure also includes the agriculture use, it will still be, and a use by right.
Right, okay, and then there's only three parking spots for RVs?
They will still be required to have additional parking, as required by the zoning ordinance for any visitors that wouldn't be through that Harvest Host program, but for now, they will just have three RV sites.
Is this a nationwide program, this, I've never heard of it.
It is, it's a nationwide program, yes.
All right, okay, no, that's all I've got, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for Megan? I've got one. On the RV type of things, you've got that it's, each one would be, and that's what we're basically approving, is three of them today, so if, my first question would be, is if they need more, do they come back then?
Yes, my understanding is right away, they will only be.
One.
Building one, and then in the next three to five years, they'll be building the other two.
Right, that they'd like the availability of those other two, and I don't have a hangup about that. What about the septic hookups? How do they, in other words, at some point, are they using the one hooked up to their septic now, and then, or what are they going to do that for RVs?
The property is currently vacant, so they don't have a septic out there right now, they will have to go through the state for approval on that septic, but whether they want to separate the septics or have them together is up to them in that process. I don't think the soils out here are all too great, so they may have to do a mound system, in which case, they would need to plan accordingly for how they want to build their septic.
All right, so I understand that they haven't made their decision on that, in other words, they may run one septic, but they also might have separate septics for the RV or the, the, what did you call it, the house where the caretaker lives, whatever, however you want to.
On the site plan, they do have a single septic. But, you know, things change as you're going through the planning process.
I guess that would be my biggest concern, in other words, how they're handling the septic, and that it's adequate for the RV, especially if we move to three or more RVs. Okay, my last one would be, is I'd like to see, you've got a condition 11 there regarding the fire pits and charcoal grills, just so that they could expand without coming back here, I'd rather see something in line with what we've been using with our bed and breakfast, our vacation home rentals, that sort of thing, so that they also have to notify those folks where to get the information, to see what the fire level is. So it's a, I'm looking, I'm asking for two conditions instead of one.
Yeah.
Is that something that you could live with, Megan?
I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't know how the board feels about it, but especially, I think it's just as important as on the plains as it is in the national forest, because the fires out in those plains, if, if the wind conditions are right, can be more serious than what's in up at the forest. And it's also difficult to get water to do, to handle them, to control them. So I'd like to see an expansion on that, especially in lieu of that we may have more than one RV. It may not come to, but, that was my only questions I had, and thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, can they run a dry system if they don't want to have, if it's people that are just coming in for overnight, or is that a requirement that they have to have a septic system?
Yep, if they're going to have RV sites on their property, they do have to be hooked up to a septic system.
Any other questions for Megan? Is your applicant here and want to speak?
I believe that they are, yes.
Would you like to speak, or are you going to trust us, one or the other?
If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to explain anything.
Please come up and introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Shonda Knuf.
Questions for Shonda? See, you could have trusted.
Yes, I know you kind of asked about the barn a little bit, and some of the animals, so there, we do have some smaller facilities for our animals that are movable, so we do have some of those, so that we can do like some pasture grazing and things like that, and then have them on there. But the big barn will definitely be more for where when people come, there's that educational purpose in there, I'm using, or I'm having mostly heritage animals, so kind of the importance of keeping those genetics different in our area, and kind of just teaching people to um, in our area and kind of just teaching people to like where our food is coming from. So that's kind of what the, the goal is for them and the preservation of it.
But while you're up here, the, um, the Harvest Host program, like I said, I'm not familiar with it. Is there, are there any more of them in the area here, or?
Um, there probably are. They can be with museums, they can be with farms, they can be with, um, really anybody. Walmart can be included in Harvest Host. I mean, I know they offer that now, but there's a lot of different venues, um, but farms are doing it. So like when we went on a tour, I'm in an agritourism class right now, as we went on a tour to Stenson's Dairy, they offer that there, um, so that people can just come and park. It doesn't necessarily cost them anything. What the goal is, is that they buy your product. And so it's just kind of a, a big venue for people that are traveling across the country that want to, instead of being in an RV facility or, you know, like a campground, is that they can be someplace unique and that has an experience there.
So all of this that you're talking about can be, uh, accessed through a website?
Yes.
They can figure it out? Okay, all right.
Yep. Yep. There's lots of, like, if you just, um, Google up Harvest Host, it kind of goes through all the different places, and then they have to join it.
Yeah.
Um, and they have to have completely self-contained, because a lot of places don't, um, require that we have, that they have the full setups, um, like Pennington County does, um, because they're fully contained, and that is the requirement of that program. But we will have that since that's required.
That sounds cool. Yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Other questions for Shonda? I just have one comment. I'm certainly much more in support of this approach to agritourism than housing people, uh, overnight in silos in our area with the hail, the tornadoes, and the electrical lightning that we have. And, and I've been opposed to that. I, I was pleasantly surprised when I read this. Thank you, Shonda.
Yes, you're welcome. Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Chair will address a motion. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, per staff's recommendation, to approve, approval of planned unit development overlay, COPU two four dash zero 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 two, with twenty-one conditions. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to item number fifteen.
Again, Commissioners Jason Theterson, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item fifteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero one to repeal section three eighteen of the Guest House of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, staff felt this was a little bit redundant since we have accessory dwelling units in our ordinance now. Uh, it seems like that more or less takes the place of this, so we're recommending to remove it.
Are you ready for questions?
Fire away.
All right. Anybody got any questions on this one? I only have one thing. I've said that before, and once I see one of these with all the redacting that's done and it's removed, and I remember voting on one of these, and then later on, it came back to haunt me on something. And is there any surprises when we redact something like this that isn't in, uh, your, uh, what would you call it, the Guest House?
I don't think so. Uh, I think, like I said, section three twenty-four with ADUs allows that flexibility, uh, to have an accessory dwelling unit on the property, which is more or less what a Guest House is anyway.
All right. It really, I, I really get hesitant to that, because I, then I say, should I sit down and read the zoning when I see that? Because I, I'm trying to remember the one. It really involved, uh, since I've been back on the board, I believe, uh, and it had to do whether we, um, had the right to make a recommendation onto the, the, uh, the Board of Commissioners. And that was removed when we removed one, all of this on a particular, um, in the past. And I, I'm not going to quote which one, but I still remember which one. And, uh, it went a long way to upset a lot of people. We just missed that something had been taken away from the commission in the way of review, so. But I don't have any hangups on this, and I tried to read through and see if there was any surprises, but, uh, not. And you feel that the new, uh, what did, what'd you call it?
Accessory dwelling.
Yeah, the accessory dwellings will cover. What about utilities? I guess that was the only thing that I had a question on weeks.
Utilities are pretty much the same. Um, the Guest House has a lot of restrictions on it, where it can only be used a hundred and eighty days out of the year. It has to have that deed restriction on it, saying as much.
And the utilities usually had to be tied to the?
Yeah, correct.
All right. We don't do that on accessory dwellings, do we?
Not necessarily, no.
No, we go with what the utility supplier, if it's a, if it's a, uh, septic, uh, sanitary district, we would go with them. Uh, if it's not, we would go with the state with a septic, that sort of thing. We go with the individual basis of the unit, right?
And that's also the way that the Guest House ordinance is written right now, too, is that
Okay.
They're, they should be connected to the principal structure. However, if the utility companies say otherwise, then we go with whatever they recommend because they're the provider. So.
And then we restrict the square feet rather comparing it to the house in our accessories.
I'm sorry, one more time?
We restrict the square footage numbers versus comparing it back to the house plus or minus.
Right.
Or whichever is greater.
Thousand square feet for a Guest House, and ADUs are capped at seven hundred. So they will be losing three hundred square feet, but.
Thank you, Jason. Anything else for Jason? Chair would address a motion.
I move we approve ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero one to repeal existing section three eighteen Guest House of the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendation OA two four dash zero one to repeal section three one eight Guest House of the Pennington County ordinance. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. On to sixteen.
Agenda item number sixteen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero two to amend section five eleven fees of the Pennington, Pennington County zoning ordinance. Uh, and this is to add an exception to allow for new and existing basement finish cost per square foot. This was something that was brought to us by the Black Hills Home Builders Association. Um, some, some feedback we're getting from them. Normally, we go by the International Code Council, uh, fees, when we have that in our list of, uh, scheduled fees in our ordinance. Um, they were saying it was a bit extreme. Uh, we took that into consideration and, uh, came forward with forty-five dollars per square foot, or thirty dollars, whichever is greater.
That seems actually higher to me, but, because you're at thirty.
Yeah, it's actually quite a bit less.
Huh?
It's actually quite a bit less.
It is, when it comes to the, how the, uh, square footage is computed?
Right. Yep. Because it's, it's four percent of that forty-five dollars per square foot.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jason? I can see your, your report heads wrinkled there.
I'm trying to see how it's going to be less, but I, I guess I, I'm not sure. But if you say it is, I, I was looking at this, trying to figure why we would do it in a basement, but you say the codes show that.
Yes. Yeah. So the argument that the home builders had was that the basement, the structure of the basement is already there. So if you're just finishing, it's all more or less framing, so it shouldn't be the same cost as finished square footage.
Yep. Any other questions for Jason? We have someone that would like to speak on this. Please come up and introduce yourself for the record. And go ahead and take off from there.
I'm Tony Thompson with TNT Homes and Construction, also sit on the committee for government affairs for Black Hills Home Builders. Um, just to speak on this a little bit. Right now, the current valuation that is being used on a new construction home is a hundred and sixty-six dollars a square foot. That includes the basement, your foundation, main floor, garage, everything pretty much the cost to build the house, except for septic, driveways, things of that nature. That same cost is carried into a basement finish. Um, the house that I just got done with out in Hidden Bluffs, I built out sixty-three thousand dollars on the permit, or, that was the retail contract for the basement finish, and the valuation that you guys came back with was a hundred and sixty-six dollars a square foot to the tune of a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. In turn, that was about eight hundred dollars more on the permit because of the valuation. Perfect fees are based off the valuation, cost of construction, things of that nature. So from my knowledge, when it comes to valuations, it's supposed to pretty much be cost of construction minus overhead and profit, things of that nature. So a hundred and sixty-six dollars, I don't disagree with on the main floor and stuff like that, but at the same time, when it comes to a basement finish, we've already paid for the foundation, we've already paid for a lot of those things. In the discussions with, um, some of the staff and stuff, we came to an agreement on the forty-five dollars a square foot. We built out anywhere from about forty-five to sixty dollars a square foot on a retail basis. So that's where the forty-five dollars came from. So I guess if you have any questions for me.
Questions for Mr. Thompson? I appreciate that. I just had one. In other words, um, when you initially apply for a housing permit, it's based upon, uh, an undeveloped basement?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So there, if you tell them that you're going to go ahead and finish the basement, then this other cost is thrown at you?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak on this matter? We try not, we try to use the speaker request forms, but also allow other people. The board wants to hear from them. Chair will address a motion.
Move to approve ordinance amendment twenty-four dash oh two.
Second. Moved in second to approve per staff's recommendations OA two four dash oh two to amend section five eleven fees of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. Discussion from the audience. From the commission. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Thank you. On to number seventeen.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item seventeen is ordinance amendment OA twenty-four dash zero three. It's to amend and supersede the existing section three nineteen for vacation home rentals. Uh, just a little history, back in twenty twenty-two, uh, the planning department, along with some members from the public, put on a, uh, vacation home rental committee, uh, to, uh, look at the vacation home rental ordinance. They proposed an ordinance, um, that went through multiple meetings in twenty twenty-three. Uh, ultimately, on, uh, November twenty-first of twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners denied, uh, that ordinance amendment. At a, a planning workshop that we, that the planning department does with the board on January thirty-first, uh, the planning department asked the board for a direction on how they wanted to do that, uh, the vacation home rental ordinance. And we listed some things. We, uh, the planning department took, um, comments from the Board of Commissioners from the public, um, and presented that to the board and to see if that was the direction that they wanted us to go. Uh, they gave us the go-ahead to go in that direction, and that's what you see before you. Um, so I guess I don't know if you want to go line by line, or how you want to, how you want to do this.
Well, yeah, we have a couple of speaker requests, and I think we probably have some other people that want to speak that don't necessarily have requests. And that'd probably be the most appropriate thing to do at this time. Would the commission agree? All right. We'll let you sit down, and we'll bring you back up, Cody. Thank you. First speaker request form is Jesse Drury. Please introduce yourself for the record, Jesse. Thank you.
I'm Jesse Drury, and I'm here representing the South Dakota Short Term Rental Association. Um, I'm gonna let Emma Bennett speak on a couple of things that came up that we didn't agree with, but did want to thank you because this is a lot better than what we had, um, sorted through in the past. So wanted to also let you know that as an association, we are committed to working with, um, short-term rental owners and you guys as well, so that this all flows a little bit smoother and everybody feels better about it. So everybody's in compliance with getting licensed and, um, has the safety measures in place for our guests.
Questions for Jesse? Thank you, Jesse.
Thanks.
Next one I've got is Emma Bennett.
Hi there. Um, so my name's Emma Bennett. Um, I mainly reside on the northeast part of the state, but I'm involved with the Short Term Rental Association as well. Um, and just had a couple of suggested revisions. I want to thank again all of you for working on this, and we feel that this is really good. There were just a couple of sections I feel like they maybe need a little bit of clarification. Uh, my first suggested revision is section E two A. Um, it talks about all ages being counted towards, uh, the number of guests. I would recommend a revision to have ages two years and older counters the number of people. I feel that infants should play a part in the number of guests. Um, Airbnb kind of requires the host to determine what ages would be considered guests.
And mechanics, would you give me that again? I didn't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Section E two A, it talks about all ages are considered towards the number of people. I would suggest ages two and up.
Okay, thank you.
Um, my next suggestion is the minimum parking requirement. Um, it currently is written for one parking spot for every one bedroom. I would maybe suggest for every two bedrooms, considering most cars are, um, have a capacity of four seats, um, and generally consider one bedroom to host maybe two people. Um, that's just something where I feel like we could maybe, um, create a little flexibility. It's not a deal breaker on my end. And then also, I think that, um, the language of, and each space shall be clearly designated as one parking spot. Um, I feel like visually, this might be a little bit, we, we provide guests and everything with second instructions on where to park. Um, I'm not sure visually, clearly designating each parking spot. I'm not sure if that means like yellow lines for each parking spots in the driveways, or if it means, um, parking spots. My short-term rental personally has tandem parking, so I don't really know how I would designate that. Um, so that's my only other suggestion for the minimum parking requirement. And then my last suggestion is section F two related to fees. Um, I think this is the most important recommendation. Currently, the way that it's written, it's saying two hundred dollars a day for advertising without a license. Um, I feel that this is written in a way that anybody who tries to come into good standing would be retroactively fined two hundred dollars for every day that they were operating without a license. So I would suggest that the language be revised to say upon notice of non-compliance, the property manager or owner has sixty days to come into compliance with the county. And I would also suggest that notice of non-compliance will be sent out effective July first, or whatever timeline, uh, the commissioners want to agree on, to allow some time for this to be notified, um, for, to allow people time to get into compliance, and that penalties would be effective started January first. Those are my suggested revisions. And then I also want to echo that SDSTRA, of course, is willing to assist with any education, um, notification. We're happy to kind of figure out, you know, who is within the county that would need to be notified of these new compliances. Um, and we just want to make sure that we're presenting the good actors of the industry, um, is what we're aiming to do.
Questions for Emma?
Any questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Um, I gotta talk about your fine.
Yeah.
Because I'm not sure, as Commissioner, how to look at that. One of the things would be is, in other words, you're saying start the fine from the time they're notified.
Yes.
However, what if they've already been operating four years without one? So you're saying, don't go back and work on any deal? In other words, we gotta catch them, right?
I think, I think that's the thing. And administratively, you know, of course, it's going to be hard to notify and figure out who is currently advertising and operating an unlicensed Airbnb, but it's also going to be just as hard to try and find those people. So I would suggest, first of all, sending a notification, you have to come into compliance, become a good actor of the industry, and then fees would apply if you don't concede to that.
Doesn't seem very hard to find out how many Airbnbs are in the area. I, I'm not sure I agree with you after sitting on three of these committees. It seems to me we can find out pretty well who's operating, whether they've got a permit or not is another case.
Yeah. And so I would think that the way that it's written is that, say, you're operating without a license, um, you know, because I think that it has been a little bit difficult to understand what the rules and requirements might be, um, just to give people a little bit of a grace period, because if you were to look back and say, you know, they were advertising, they would be fined maybe tens of thousands of dollars. Two hundred dollars a day is pretty exorbitant. Um, that's six thousand dollars a month, um, for advertising, and I'm not really sure how you would figure out the effective date of advertising. Um, so I would just say give people a grace period, whether that's a couple of months, whether that's the rest of the year, um, to get this licensing. We would then want to penalize them after that. I do agree in a fee system, um, like I said, we want to represent good actors. Um, but I feel like two hundred dollars a day, there's some Airbnbs that don't charge two hundred dollars. two hundred dollars a day, and that would take them out of business completely.
I'm not sure how to take that. In other words, I'm still having problem after serving on one of these, uh I've served three times on that over twenty years. And anybody that doesn't know that we have an ordinance on vacation home rentals, you're, you're saying we just disregard that again. Why not run the gauntlet, right? Because it's only gonna fine two hundred dollars. Isn't that less than a day's rent on most of these?
Yeah, two hundred dollars a day is.
Thank you.
Pretty excessive, I think.
I just want to point out, this, this is a tough thing to be a commissioner and decide what to go on this. And I don't say we go back unlimited, but people running the gauntlet in this county on this particular subject is a serious one.
Yeah.
And we don't have an enforcement uh situation where we can go out there and collect it, but it is able, any one of us can sit and find out how many uh vacation home rentals are operating any particular year in Pennington County. That isn't very hard.
Yeah.
To do.
So is the plan then, once this comes into effect, to retroactively fine those who have not had licensing for two hundred dollars a day? Or is the plan moving forward once this is passed?
I'm saying my mind's open on it, but to give it to start from the time you, you first notice it, I don't think that's fair either.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe instead, you know, there's kind of two ways I think that this could be done, to just give people a little bit of a grace period. Um if you're not able to send notice out, or if administratively, um you know, non-compliance notice, and then apply the fees after a certain grace period of notification, but it also could just be non-compliance after an effective date that this is passed. But I don't think we should, as soon as it's approved, start to say um, you know, fines for two hundred dollars for anybody who has been operating without a license. I would just say to give people a little bit of time to come into compliance, and then you can proceed with fines. Um one thought about the two hundred dollars a day, you know, there's some Airbnbs that charge well over five hundred to up to a thousand dollars a night. Um these smaller Airbnbs, two hundred dollars a day, some of them are not even charging two hundred dollars a night, so that fee would probably take them out of business or put them in a really big financial hole to where they would no, no longer be able to operate. Um so maybe it's something like fifty dollars per bedroom of the Airbnb, so it can be a little more equitable for those smaller managers as well.
Is your association also aware that when they are incorporated areas, and I'm talking Rapid City, Hill City, the two hundred dollars a day dozen involvement? Basically, Rapid City pretty much looks the other direction on all of them. They got about four or four to six hundred of them.
Yeah, yeah. And so I think, you know, that's why I want to say that SDSTRA, we're willing to help you um, you know, figure out who needs to come into compliance. Um we're happy to even help with notification of this, make sure that people are coming into, becoming good actors within the industry. Um but I would just say upon notice of non-compliance or notice um after a certain amount of days of this being passed or a certain amount of weeks, so a lot of people tend to get.
I will concur that there has to be a limit.
Yeah.
That part I'll concur.
Yeah, yeah.
As to where it's at right now, I'm not sure I know.
Sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no worries.
Any other questions for Emma? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else here to speak on this? I'm done with my speaker request. Certainly, please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Tom Palm. I have a distinct feeling of deja vu. Um so yes, first of all, I appreciate that this uh is coming back before all of you. Um my, my opinion is that I think the county commissioners could grab the bull by the horns and solved it while they had it in their hands, but um here we are. So I, I'm kind of going back over what the last speaker's questions were um and want to try and clarify that a little bit. So first of all, in terms of the, and I appreciate all the rest of this, I think you're definitely moving in the right direction. I think there was a lot of opinion from the commissioners and some members of this board that there was a little bit too much overreach with the last proposed ordinance. So it seems like a lot of that has moved uh the, the right direction, in my opinion anyway. As far as the fines, um I guess my question is, is if someone operates without a license, is that then a, the fines, is that a civil fine or is that a criminal fine? So in other words, if you don't pay your parking tickets or your speeding fine, eventually a warrant will be issued for your arrest. If you don't pay your property taxes, the, the county will issue a lien against your property and eventually even possibly take the property. So it's not laid out here exactly how those fines are uh uh to be, first of all administered, and second of all, kind of what part of the judicial, judicial system does that fall under? Um so I guess that's one of my questions. I'm also making the assumption that if and when this proposal becomes a, a lawful ordinance, that would be the time going forward where the laws and the rules would be put in place, that going back retroactively, I, I, I can't imagine how you would do that. No other law works that way. So I just want clarification there, and then kind of uh piggybacking on what the former speaker said, I would think that there should be some sort of a grace period, so say this law, this ordinance went into effect, pick a date, July first, that there would be some amount of grace period given to people who are currently not operating, for whatever reason, without a license, to um get their paperwork together, uh present it to Planning and Zoning, and actually get their license without racking up that fine every day until they get to that point. I don't know what that proper day, uh is it thirty days, sixty days, but um hard for me to imagine that you could say July first, the law goes into effect, July second, we start fining people. So I think those are my, my main questions. Other than that, I, I, I uh, I find it kind of humorous that we're back here, but on the other hand, um I think we're moving in the right direction. I hope that the momentum continues and we kind of don't uh go around that circle again and find ourselves in August, the same place we were last August. So I appreciate your time, thanks.
Questions for Tom? Tom, since you've stood in on a lot of these meetings on the last go-around of this, we'll review my comments about the, the fines. How do you go about establishing something when you've got twenty years of looking the other direction?
It's kind of like any change of rules, you've just got to do it. I think.
What do you use as the trigger date? I didn't catch that when you were talking. What, what would you propose to use as the trigger date? Is it a date of notice? Or is it the date the planning department sees that they're advertising and?
Uh no, I don't, I, I don't particularly agree with that because it would get so cumbersome and so complicated. So no, I think you have to establish whatever day the ordinance goes into effect, whether that is on a calendar, beginning of the new calendar year, or beginning of the new month, or whatever it is, and I don't know how ordinances are typically put into effect after being voted on and approved. Um and maybe that's another question you guys can answer. But once it is approved, and it is now the new ordinance, it is now legally binding, um no, I don't think it can be different for every party, and you, you gotta try and figure out when they were advertising, when they weren't. That, that seems extremely cumbersome, but I think there does need to be some uh and probably written into the document that once it goes into effect, now everybody has whatever that number is, thirty days, sixty days, some reasonable number for both sides, but no, I don't think it can, if you don't catch somebody for three years, I don't think, first of all, you, you start from that point, or you go retroactively back. I mean, I, I can't even imagine.
I know what I'm talking about. Some of them list like the, you'll see the comments piled, their postings, and it goes back a number, if they're, especially if they're operating under good, um some of these organizations that are fully developed, that they're, they also have another set of rules they're operating on, Airbnb, and I can't think of the different, we, we've reviewed about three, four of those. You can go back quite a ways and get comments on the, the unit that you're looking at renting. And, and that's where my comments are coming from. In other words, we have some idea that they've been operating a long time, and there has to be a limit somewhere, I'm sure.
But are you saying that you would retroactively go back after the ordinance is in place and say, we're gonna find somebody who's been operating for the last forty years?
Oh, I'm gonna be honest and say, as a commissioner, I'm sitting there and I'm talking to someone that's um obviously avoided signing up on the program, so to speak, and that's been nice to him for a number of years, and I'm as a commissioner, listening to them when they're finally getting on the program. That's a lot different than a person that's been out on their thirty days and didn't realize, came from some other area and opened up a bed and breakfast here, or something like that, a vacation home rental, and they didn't know that we have ordinances uh that cover that. So there's a lot of difference. I'm just a person, I'm listening to somebody that I know went on for years avoiding getting that permit, now we've caught them, you know?
But you've caught, okay, so given that circumstance, people operating today without a license are operating under the current ordinance, which has fines. So and, and the, and the fines are, are laid out. So if you want to go back and fine them for operating without a license, under the old ordinance set of fines, that's a different story than.
Not saying to do that, Tom, I'm saying I'm sticking up for both the people that did take the time to get uh the appropriate uh permit to operate and those that didn't. And there's a great deal of difference between those that blatantly do it versus those that don't.
I agree, I think um.
We have to protect the ones that did take the time to get the permit too. They certainly have their thoughts on it. They sat there and paid whatever it was, and to do it appropriately along the way. We have people that don't even take the time to get the state approval.
But can you think of a situ, another situation where a law goes into effect, and then you retroactively fine people for not obeying the new law?
Now, this one, we've done it three times. This one, every time, there was always a, and you can ask the commissioner, there was always a, a, what did we call it? A grace period that was put in every one of them, so every time. So here we are again, looking at a fourth time. So it, it, some of it has to do, Tom, with the abilities of our planning department to administer. Is that a good way to, to say it, the law of the ordinance versus um the number of people they have and what, what are the rules they have to administer by? And I'm trying to say that if you have a blatant one versus a non-blaten, there's got to be some consideration for that. There's got to be consideration for people that take the time to get the appropriate permit.
And I, and I agree going forward. I think whatever, say it's a fifteen-day grace, whatever it is, or hmm, but I, I, I think if you.
So now, it, can I stop you there? That meant, then after that, if the fifteen days have, have gone by, cause I'm still looking for direction here, what you expect?
Yep.
Then, in other words, if we gave notice to someone after that, it's at the notice date or the date of the ordinance?
I would say the date of the ordinance.
Okay.
But to say someone's been operating for five years.
Yeah.
Without a license, and then you went back and fined them two hundred dollars a day? I mean, that you would.
I have a suggestion.
There'd be half a million dollars in fines.
Go ahead.
It seems like we'd have to give written notification to someone who's operating without a license, and I would think any fines would start at that date, at notification, date of notification. You can't go retroactive, you just simply cannot.
Great. We've got one more back here too yet.
Uh so Cody Sack, environmental planner, uh we're not gonna act, retroactively go after people who have, who are not in compliance. The, the purpose of this ordinance um is to try to get people into compliance. One of the biggest things we heard um at some of those meetings were that the rules, even in our current ordinance, were so restrictive that people couldn't meet them, so they were just operating. The purpose of this new ordinance and the board, direction that the board wanted to go was to bring people into compliance, so they had everything that they were required to have, um and keep the initial licensing fee low and have the penalty fee high to punish the people who weren't actually doing what they were supposed to be doing, since we're kind of pulling back on some of those restrictions. So we're not gonna retroactively go after someone who's been operating for three years and charge them eighteen thousand dollars or however, thousands of dollars in penalty fees. We're just not gonna do that. There'll be a grace period. If you're not in compliance after that grace period's done, then you will start um occurring that fine.
So do, do you have a recommended grace period, though?
Generally, thirty, sixty days. I believe for our ordinance, or for our septic ordinance, when people had to get certified for, uh take a certification test, I believe we gave them either sixty or ninety days. I believe that would be up.
I think one of them was ninety days.
It'd be up to the board of commissioners or what the board of commissioners would, or, or and the planning commission would want to see for that, for that date.
Thanks.
It, it sounds like we're on the same page there.
Okay, Tom.
So then, yeah, going back to, just for my own curiosity, then the question is, if someone doesn't uh get their license and they operate and the fines start coming in, is, is that a, is that a civil or is that a criminal charge?
Uh Cody Sack, uh it'd be civil. Um ev- eventually, if people don't come into compliance, they get sent to our state's attorney's office, our state's attorney sends them a letter. Uh if they still don't come into compliance, then our state's attorney takes them over to uh circuit court. So at that point, it can become judicial.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Any other questions for Tom? Jesse, you.
Thank you.
You had your hand up and wanted to.
Mister, Mister Chairman, may I say something for you?
Sure, but, okay, go ahead.
I, I, no, I just wanted to say that I, that uh commissioners, we've deci, I've decided to abstain from this ordinance, so I facilitated the meetings, but abstained on, under this one. I think what I'm gonna do is to follow that suit, and what I will do is I'll sit out in the public, and if you have any questions, you can ask.
Okay. Thank you. Jesse, please introduce yourself again for the record, there are people can't see us.
I'm Jesse Drury. Um in regards to the daily fine, if one person is managing multiple short-term rentals, all of the reviews for every short-term rental will be on their, say Airbnb, so it would be hard to track if someone had, say, an Airbnb in Rapid City and then one in Pennington County, um if you're gonna go off of reviews, but I think we've already.
Mean which is which?
Right, because all the reviews are for whoever is the property manager or the person who's taking care of the property, they're all under that.
Unless the person actually named it in the review, in other words.
Correct.
It's basically an open listing.
Correct.
By the month? How is it done? By the week?
They just leave reviews, um the review is, the review, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
They just leave reviews based on their stay. So some of them don't say, I stayed at this certain property, they just leave review and said, had a great time, or.
Lot of them I looked at had, at least had a date on it, and that was about all that I can remember.
Right, but even if it has a date, if I had, say, a, a property I managed in Rapid City and then one in the county, it would be hard to tell who was leaving that review where, so.
I agree, I couldn't decide either.
Okay.
Go ahead, Cody.
Uh so Cody Sack, environmental planner. So most likely what's going to happen with it is exactly what they stated before with the letter. Once you receive that letter, if you keep operating afterwards, that's probably where you'll start occurring that fine. Um it is kind of hard to go back and see like how, how far they were advertising before that, um so it probably will be after that letter date.
Could, since this is wide open, could we add language that says that if they have not initiated the process to, to obtain a license? You know, something about within a certain amount of time that they would start being fined, s- something to make it more specific?
That would be y- yes, I, I would say yes for the grace period, no for the letter. The letter, all specifically states, I believe, we give people ten days to contact us, um and really everything that someone needs for our license, they should have, most of it comes from the state of South Dakota, so they should be able to get that license within a relatively short period of time.
Thank you.
Cody, I got one. I just want, you know, basically, the state, I'm sure in the court system does, has a, a guideline, what is considered official notice, and I doubt whether any fine could exceed official notice. In other words, when it's properly delivered. If we select the wrong avenue to deliver it to, I don't think it even starts then. There's usually a guideline, very specific, of like our publishing uh conditional use permits that has to be followed.
My, my guess would be that we'd have our ordinance enforcement officers send those letters, certified return receipt, so the date that they sign that letter would be the. date that they start getting that fine.
And you'd probably use the address that's whatever you found was considered in violation?
Correct.
Okay. Which may or may not be the appropriate address. Somebody could be from out of state or-
They, they could be, so, so they, they, so a property owner might have a, a property manager managing that property, but the homeowner is still ultimately responsible for that property, if any violation that's on that property.
Yep. Thank you. Any other questions for Cody? Anyone else? Did I see a hand up? We certainly don't wanna cut anybody off. Emma, you can, gotta reintroduce yourself, just for the record. See what you started?
I know, I know.
Go ahead.
So Emma Bennett, once again. Um, just thinking about the discussions and appreciate the insight too, um, one thing we're discussing too is how long it will take the city to process and go through all these administrative hearings. Um, so my recommendation is maybe notice of an ordinance will be sent July first, and of course, feel free to amend any of these timelines based on the bandwidth of the staff. Um, and then maybe penalties apply at whatever point after that notice of the ordinance applying. Um, I would maybe suggest January first, just to give everybody the full year to go through all those hearings, to go through all the paperwork, to get approval from the state. And then add January first, a list of, you know, you'll already send the list of the ordinance, you'll have that same list to check and see who came into compliance. Those that didn't, you said notice January first, and then maybe sixty days, ninety days, whatever it is for them to come into compliance, the fees would start applying after that.
Emma, I gotta correct you, it's the county though.
County, sorry, 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 county, yes.
The city, I believe, will continue to operate as they see fit, as well as Hill Cities, and we do have a number of incorporated areas. And none of those, we have any jurisdiction in that ordinance, once they're incorporated.
Yeah, county, sorry.
Okay, just so you understand that.
Just a suggestion there, just for language.
Any question for Emma while we got her back up here? Go ahead.
Would just like to comment, we aren't gonna know who's not in compliance on July first. I mean, it, we process them as, as maybe they're turned into our planning department, that sort of thing, so we don't have a list of-
Do you have a list of any of the short-term rentals that, that are operating in the county? Whether or not they're licensed?
We have the ones that have applied for licenses, but the ones that have not applied for licenses, it's just as we become aware of them.
Yeah, and maybe that's something the association could help with, like if we can provide some time to research some of those properties of non-compliance, um, you know, we're happy to send notice and, um, try and get the word out too, whether it's advertising or trying to come up with a list. Um, we're happy to collaborate with the county on that. Not the city, the county. Thank you.
Cody, you wanna weigh in here again?
Yeah. Uh, so Cody Sack of our mental planner, so, uh, just talked with Brittany, the last several ordinances that we've done, even with the V H R one, we gave people a hundred and eighty days, um, after the ordinance was in effect, uh, to come into compliance. Um-
I think that's too generous.
I forgot my other point. I apologize.
We'll let you back up again, Cody, if you remember.
Okay.
Go ahead, Tom. You certainly have a right to come back up again.
Thank you. Tom Palm again. Uh, so, just one further clarification, then, in, uh, assuming that this proposal goes forward in the effort to simplify everyone's job of getting a license, both from your point of view and, uh, any vacation home renters, owner, is it then the process gonna be, as long as they have all the requirements listed here, that person takes the paperwork into planning and zoning's office, they look through it and go, yep, you're good to go? Or do, do, does that process still include having to appear before this board, um, under the consent agenda or whatever to have that approval given?
No, I think Cody's ready to come in.
So Cody Sack of our mental planner, that is a, gonna be an administrative review in our office. I'm not gonna say that it's gonna be same day that it's stamped off on. Um, we'll take it in, we'll review it. Um, generally on, like, uh, special permitted uses, we have thirty days to get that back to the applicant. I don't know if that's the timeline that we're gonna do on this one. Um, and then my other comment was, uh, for the ones that are non-compliant, the Board of Commissioners' direction is complaint basis only, so we don't go look for properties that are not compliant. Um, someone would have to complain that's, or file a complaint that said they weren't compliant for us to send a letter to them.
And that would, hm, that would, that kind of unofficial position would continue?
Uh, correct. That's the position that we take on all, all, uh, a- anything in our ordinance, um, unless it's really affecting public healthers or, uh, safety, uh, then it's just complaint basis only.
Thanks. Questions?
Thank you, Tom. Brittany, can I bug you to get up here and kinda, Cody pointed out enforcement. Enforcement's always been, uh, what the approach is to enforcement. It's been a big, uh, matter in regards to this ordinance from day one. Um, tell us how you come up with your enforcement. It looks to me like it's limited by staff, dollars, a lot of things.
And it's also difficult, sorry, Brittany Moll, our planning director, it's also difficult too because of the fourteen day rule. So unless we get a complaint from a neighbor that could substantiate that it's rented every day on a regular basis, it's pretty difficult for our ordinance enforcement, um, to prove that it's outside of that fourteen days, because typically if he does contact them, that's what they tell us. So having, you know, backup, so to speak, or a neighbor, um, so that's typically how we go about, um, enforcement on the V H Rs.
Like double jeopardy, isn't it? Fourteen day rule and then you've got a limit to, and, but on a complaint basis.
Mm-hmm.
We do that on a lot of things, because we only have a, we, how many, uh, enforcement people do you have?
One.
Thank you.
I have a question, Brittany, probably. Um, you mentioned special permitted uses, that, that's not included in here, is it?
No, that's a separate section of our ordinance. Um, so special permitted uses are typically accessory structures, um, that are constructed as a principal use, um, some, um, public service structures, things like that, um, they're administratively reviewed, living in an RV while constructing a, a residence. Those ones are typically, um, special permitted uses, so.
So, we had a section in the, the ordinance that failed, um, to where planning could approve if you had, if the applicant had everything they needed, wasn't that a, was that a special permitted use or was that a different name?
Yes, that was a special permitted use.
And it seems like that would make this much more efficient if that part was put back into where planning could approve some of these.
So it's similar to it with the licensing procedure. Um, so the special permitted use is actually a statutory requirement, there's very specific things in statute where they write up about special permitted use, the licensing is a little different-
Okay.
-than that. Um, also, it, with an administrative review, um, there is an appeal process, um, for that. So any administrative, um, review or determination can be appealed to the Board of Adjustment. So any of our, um, decisions on a V H R per se, if, um, a neighbor or someone, um, I think it is aggrieved, um, a person that's aggrieved by the decision, they can appeal it to the Board of Adjustment.
Just one last thing. Regardless of what ordinance is in place in vac-, on vacation home rentals, we still have the fourteen day.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone else? You wanna put a motion on it for us, so we can discuss?
I'd like to say, go, go ahead.
Go ahead, if you like.
I'd like to say something here. Back up a little bit on, on this new proposed text. I looked at this over the weekend numerous times. We started off with a committee that met for many months and did a lot of research. When they were done, they gave it to us, we held public meetings, we went through it, we argued, we carried on, and we sent a thing on to the commissioners. Um, what we've got back here, if you're familiar with the car business, this is a stripper. This does not have power windows, this does not have radios, this is just, this doesn't have licensing ads, it doesn't have quiet hours, it doesn't have density, it doesn't have signs, it doesn't have minimum acres. There's no guardrails at all in this thing. A- and I guess, the, the thing that bothers me, take for example, I have my house out in country in Hill City, somebody next door from Nebraska buys the house next to me just for a vacation home rental. There's no signs to be put up. I have absolutely no idea anything's going on until the people start coming in on their vacation home rental. I, I, I would not vote to pass this as this stripper is, I really wouldn't. I, I think there needs to be some guardrails, maybe not as many as we had, but I really think we need to look this thing over. And, and what you're talking, what Tom's talking about and all that, I understand, and, and those are mid-course corrections that need to be made. But, uh, from my point of view, th- this is, uh, there's just no guardrails. I'm just not comfortable with it, Mr. Chairman.
Kevin. I'm on the other side of the fence, of course. Um, I agree with most everything that was addressed out here. I don't agree with putting it off till January first. I think that there's been enough discussion on this that people know, maybe it's a hundred and eighty days, but that starts the minute this thing is approved, which, um, you know, if that happened today or if it happened next month, it needs to be addressed. Um, most of the people out there, and our whole goal, um, when we came up with this was to get people into the flock. Um, I agree, I think that we've got, um, some, some good penalties. I've always been, I, I've said from day one that we need to police and have, uh, three strikes and you're out or something for the, the people that aren't complying with it. Most of the people are complying with it. Most of the people are doing the things that they should do. With all of the things that we talked about, um, you know, the fourteen day has come up, I believe that that's an IRS rule, you can use your house for fourteen days without having to pay any tax on it. So that's where that stuff all kind of falls into place. Um, I, I don't know if it's a state issue with two-year-old kids unless, I kind of agree with that because they are not using facilities as an adult would, but I don't know, Brittany may know if that's a state thing that it has to be everybody. Um, I agree with the parking, a lot of the Airbnbs or the short-term rentals are on gravel driveways, that, um, that's pretty tough to identify that specifically, you can pretty much tell by the size of it. Uh, so I, I agree with that. Um, the, the fines, I, I think that's a big thing there, once, you know, and we probably need to put in there that, you know, it's two hundred dollars a day, up to five thousand dollars, you know, make it hurt enough, but not to bankruptcy, um, because we do need to have some kind of a, a bat to get those people to come in and get their operator's permit. Um, so I, I am in support of this, so much more than the stuff that we were going through before, you know, and I, I'm sorry that the committee spent two years on it, I understand that, but I also think that, that it needs to be more of an operator's license like this, rather than an administrative position where the county is sitting there all the time, having to go inspect, going to do this and that and that. That's my two cents on it.
Kevin.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to continue. Ordinance Amendment OA twenty-four dash oh one to our next regularly scheduled commission meeting.
Oh three. If we're, if, aren't we ongoing? Vacation home rentals, oh three?
That'll three.
Twenty-four oh three.
Yeah, I passed too many pages, sorry.
Go ahead, Kevin, I'm sorry you interrupted.
Yeah, um, ordinance amendment twenty-four dash oh three, um, until our next regularly scheduled commission meeting, which I believe is April eighth?
Second. That moved in second to continue ordinance amendment OA two-four dash oh three, uh, to the April eighth, was that correct, jury?
Yes.
Yeah, now a discussion.
Okay. Um, I think we've got a lot of, uh, good points in this. I agree with Kevin. I also agree with Mike. Um, I, I think that there needs to be some boundaries and some more definition within the language here, especially with fees and fines. There's been a lot of good points brought up, but, you know, the, the public that reads the ordinance needs to know when's the start and stop, when's the, you know, these kind of details are lacking in this current document. I cannot approve it the way it is. Um, we've had several other things brought up to us, um, you know, ATV's coming out on a bunch of trailers, um, you know, I, I don't disagree with one parking spot per bedroom, because that gives them room to park a truck and a trailer if multiple people are coming and staying in a bedroom. So it, there's some of this that's really good, I like it. Um, there's some of it that I think just needs a lot more clarification. Fees and fines are one of them. Um, a hundred and fifty every three years, that's fifty dollars a year. Um, that seems incredibly low to me. I mean, I, I really like the teeth of the fines to be able to bring people into compliance, to be able to have the bat, as Kevin said. Um, but I think a, a annual fee should at least be equal to a nightly, an average nightly rent of a vacation home rental. So I don't think it's beyond, you know, a hundred and fifty dollars a year for three years, four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, it, you know, they're, they're renting those things for at least, um, five to six months every year and, uh, have one day's rent go towards a licensing fee, I don't think is excessive. Um, still low enough that most people can come into compliance. But I think there's just some boundaries we need to identify and put within this document.
Karen?
Hmm?
You wanna weigh in?
Did you have a second on that?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. I agree. I, I think the fee section needs to be clarified. Um, designated parking, I think a good point was made, that a lot of the parking may be on gravel, so how do you designate? Um, we, after going to the January thirty-first meeting, we know the commissioners aren't going to adopt something that's nearly as comprehensive as what we initially submitted, so I'm okay with that if we put some teeth in the fines and, and carry on from there.
You wanna weigh in, Kevin?
Just that I will be out of town on the eighth and would like to be part of this. I'm planning on driving about thirty hours to spend five minutes in the dark.
I'm gonna weigh in. I've sat on all, sat on all three of the committees that ever came up on this before we had an ordinance. The Black Hills has its own dynamics in regards to this issue. I'm greatly, uh, support the statewide effort, but the, we're not, we're not talking vacation home rentals around Lake Madison at Chester when you're in the Black Hills. You're actually talking about housing developments that we have no limit to what we can do in those in regards to vacation home rentals or whether they're full-time, uh, Pennington County residents or not. Planning and zoning exists in Pennington County and is, is a, a legal situation thanks to the state, and I think they see that. We actually have, the Black Hills are totally different dynamics than our own, uh, flatland country in our own Pennington County, but it's a way to personalize approach to things, not cookie cutter, that fits the state. And I'll throw in just a simple thing like a, a section line. Look at a section line in, uh, Mitchell versus the section line here, what the difficulties are in regards to approaching that. We actually have, uh, agricultural people now that are wanting to remove some of the section lines, so they can go ahead and develop them for crops. We have section lines you can't even get through, because they're all rock and nobody ever intended to develop them. The S U P, C U P in the license that were involved in this, Kevin, I think that S U P situation answers a lot of the questions that you're talking about for the right to use your property. That S U P, if you qualify and you deal with the state requirements that exist for these and you go about it as far as the county, I don't wanna talk about the city, they've got their own difficulty approaching this, but just the sheer numbers sitting on this committee, and it's come up twice, we have a great deal of our population looking the other way on this issue. It's that simple. They aren't approaching it, they couldn't care less what the state does. We have a certain number that do pick up what the state requirements are, couldn't care less what we do, they know we only have one person enforcing this. And we haven't done a great job of that, we usually let them off the hook. There was, on the last committee, Brittany, just in case you want to take the exception with me, come up. Um, the last committee makeup, and we don't have our liaison from the commissioners, otherwise I'd have picked- I'd have picked them in, was basically, there was two people opposed, one that was pretty neutral, and four that were operators of vacation home rentals or directly involved in the industry.
I would say you're correct.
Thank you. Do you realize what that meant for, to put that together that went to the board of commissioners to send it on down the road? Do you realize the hours we've put in reviewing that? I think it addressed the dynamics of the Black Hills. I think these people out here, irregardless of their age, and I've said it's an age problem all along, as soon as us old geezers are gone, you're not going to have that much problem from the state or anywhere else over vacation home rentals. Old geezers got a different approach to the whole matter, and I know you know that. The difference in the age of the person that's living alongside of these. So I've got a real hangup. I'm going to support continuing it, but, I mean, there's something, there was nothing wrong with what was submitted to your body, other than a lot of conversation that didn't exist, and one of them, I'm going to take exception with right now, and they can come, they probably will be at the next meeting, but the idea that there wasn't complaints, I listened to a lot of complaints. So did this planning department, so did the people that served on the committee, so have other members of this commission. I don't know where those board of commissioners were coming from, and they can take exception with me, but I guarantee you, I got complaints. So where are the members of the committee that served on this? I see one person that probably been involved in this for 20 years like I have, sitting in the back. The only person here, I think they gave up on you. I think they've given up on you. I don't think they, I think they were embarrassed that they ever served them for the heat they took, especially the operators. It's that, and we're talking about a problem that exists in our county that's quite big. There, there's people, the 14-day rule, the state, for whatever reason, the state does it, it certainly does not enhance proper operation of, of an ordinance. So that's where it's at. Anybody else? If you're unhappy with my comments, I'm sorry. I've sat through it a lot. Yes, sir. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lloyd LaCroy. You're absolutely right. I mean, I sit on both sides at the last meeting. I do own a vacation home rental, and I, and I think, so often the, people trade the label and put all things in one box. Ordinance is the same. I believe ordinance are just a basic guideline to go by. That's why we have commissioners and planning commissions for exceptions and so forth. But I think this subject had been going on for seven years that I know of, and prior before that, so at least eight years, and, and one of the big things was all these people from out of state are coming and buying these houses, and that's what it is, but it's not all that. I'm not from out of state. I know several people from Sioux Falls who have properties here and people that care. And so not everybody's in the same box. You guys, I feel, did an exceptional job with this. You know, you never know from one session to next how things are going to go, you know. It was questioned whether, since I own one, I should abstain from it, so I chose that route, but I can here in front of you answer any questions you may have on, on that process. I, I agree with you, Charlie. I think at that meeting, it, it started stripping a bunch of stuff away that was even basic, just basic, I mean, the fire pit, have, you know, having the permit for the fire pit, that just really blew me away. That was a basic, that helped not only the, the owner of the property enforce something, but that was just some of that stuff. One of the other things that concerned me is, is I just attended a meeting in Hill City with all the residents. I bet you there was 120 to 130 people there talking about assessments and affordability. I talked to one couple that said, "I'm getting taxed out of my home."
Yeah.
Getting taxed out of my home. You know what I'm saying? And one of the things in this ordinance that before I had to abstain that I didn't like was the accessory dwelling, the main home had to be the main residence. As we age, we don't need the big square footage, so the accessory dwelling to me is a proper way for our older population to be able to stay in a smaller square footage place and have some assistance to pay the taxes and upkeep the property to stay in there longer. That's my opinion. And I think that's one thing that I like, that I would like to see changed because, quite frankly, that's why the accessory dwellings are coming up throughout the city, down in the city, but in the county, is, is for that reason, where, you know, housing costs are getting to be so much that families are going in together to buy homes. You know, I've expressed that. But by all means, that, that's my, my two cents on, on, on the ordinance, and, and I think you guys did an awesome job working on it. It's, it's never easy because it comes to another meeting and you don't see the outside forces coming into that one either because everyone's a little bit different, but I, I agree with you, when you start taking some of that stuff away, and some of it's the basic stuff that the, the state requires.
I have two questions, Lloyd. One, what was the vote on to do, it was two to one, wasn't it? Drews was absent and you abstained. There was only three commissioners voted on, wasn't it?
I think they said two to, because...
Was it two to, and then it failed? So he made that meeting even though it was down in period. Okay, because I wasn't there, I wasn't going to sit in, had my two cents. The second question is, do you think the commissioners understood special use permits since it sets a new style of ordinance? Do you think they understood it? It was only two years old at the time.
Personally, I don't think they've seen that in there because that, that was one of the things that, that I think was a big thing for this ordinance too. Instead of having a conditional use permit, the special use was administrative. I don't think they really understood that myself, for at least ways it wasn't discussed.
All right. And then my last question would be, it, it didn't seem to be discussed, and I'd heard other commissioners note the same to me, about the fact that it was required to use a license number in advertising and that to help track units that were, had, at least had a permit under our ordinance. Is that correct? Do you think that really was understood?
I, the message that I heard was probably the same thing you heard, people thought overregulation, that was the...
Okay.
That was the focus on the whole thing. Quite frankly, I, I, I like the operating number myself personally, not only because I have one, not even really considered a vacation rental, you know, when you talked about five months out of the year, my phone's up there, I can show you, it's more like three.
I'll get out of your way, but then it's sad on a special use permit because actually there was less convolutants than our existing ordinance in the new one, and they were overregulation seemed to be the topic, and I agree with you, that came up. I think we, we listened to it too much and there wasn't enough support for what, what we were taking away in allowing people to do it through an administrative channel, which Kevin has indicated, that's pretty important in the new one we're looking at. So I'm, I'm done. Any of the other commissioners would like to ask Mr. LaCroy a question?
One other thing, I'll, I'll make the comment on that I think was a big thing that why we didn't think compliance. We had a lot of them coming up for exceptions for the under the one acre rule.
Sure.
Okay, so I thought the original one fixed that, where that would get more people in compliance.
Yeah.
So that was one other thing.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. LaCroy? Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes. Please come forward to introduce yourself for the record. I hope you didn't consider my comments disparaging that you've been here as long on this subject as I have.
Rita Chapman, I actually wasn't going to talk at all, but then I thought that some things were brought up. Is there any way to add a line in to put in some conditions when they apply for the license by the planning and zoning that are specific to the location that it's going to be in? You know, if it's surrounded by houses, maybe do have a quiet hour. I don't know if that's, that's something to be considered in the next couple of weeks to maybe just add a line, that the planning and zoning office can add a condition to the license.
Location-specific.
Based on location-specific information. I thought that there were some guidelines put in that, I, I didn't really go through this until the meeting, so I'm sorry, but I thought there were some guidelines, because there is a revocation and suspension of VHR licenses, and under H1B, it says the continued use of the dwelling as a VHR determined by the planning director to be a public, a threat to public health and safety or general welfare. That's kind of a guideline there that if there is extended noisiness or things like that, that actually is, is a threat to general welfare. It really is, and it can be applied there. You can have a revocation of, or suspension of the license. They can, that is a ground for revocation. Too many complaints against a poorly managed vacation home, they have to have, they'll be given notice and then they'll have a hearing and they can have all sorts of things happen. To me, that sounds like, am I wrong on that?
I think what you're saying is probably true. When it gets into legal specifics, it spreads out a whole bunch, as well as history.
Mm-hmm.
We regularly get pointed out to us that once a conditional use permit's been granted, it never gets taken away. I'm sure as members, we've all heard that before. Kevin has, and he's served several times.
But there's still a guideline there.
There is a basis for it, but it's seldom used.
Use used, okay.
Yes, that's where I was headed with it.
And then, once again, I, I keep going back to on these guidelines and guidelines, guidelines, and I didn't mind the last one. I thought that was a great idea. The specially permitted use was great. This one I think is great too, just because it allows for the people under one acre to become compliant. And remember too, that each development, a development, you might have a hard time, every development has covenants, and I think they're required to have covenants now. Is that true?
I don't think so.
If a new development, if there's a new development, they are required to have...
Planning is saying no.
Oh, no?
From a planning viewpoint, no.
Okay, so most, most developments though do have covenants. You might not be able to change a development covenant to say no vacation homes or no short-term rentals, but it's easy to have them add in quiet hours or something like that, to make it pleasant for everybody. So there are covenants that can be dealt with within the developments that aren't necessarily, that are easy to pass, is what I'm getting at.
Protected devices.
Yes, you can have protective covenants within, and let the development do that. That is their responsibility. If you don't enforce your covenants, if you don't have a strong covenant, then you might as well get rid of them all. So you have to enforce your covenants, and that's a huge thing too, is a lot of the times the developments want the county to be their covenant.
Yeah.
And that is not the case. Each development needs to take care of itself. Each one is totally different anywhere in the Black Hills. So anyway, any questions? Those are just my two cents.
Thanks Rita for being around a long time on this. I will say, you've, you've been there, you know, for, against, you've spoken out, I appreciate that. Thank you.
When I retire, I want my daughter to take over for me. It's getting close. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before she came up, my finger is on number eight because that does address a lot of things. That's the revocation of a vacation home rental permit. I agree with the gentleman and lady that there's maybe no guardrails, there's maybe a few things that need to be tweaked there, but my firm believing has always been, and I know that it's tough for a neighbor to call in a complaint, but if it's serious enough, and let's use an example of one of the small valleys out in the hills by Hill City, where the four-wheelers are coming in and tearing up the roads. If that vacation home renter, owner doesn't control that to a certain extent, then they should fall under one of these guidelines and they don't become allowed to have a vacation home rental, because it's screwing up the neighborhood, it's screwing up the road, and that's the whole purpose of having an operation, operators permit, is a, a section like this that will address bad behavior. If it happens once, that's going to happen sometimes, but if, I think that we've got, you know, if there's like a third offense, something like that, that operator needs to have their permit revoked. That's, and that's addressed in a number of different issues in Section 8. And again, if it's, if it's not serious enough for a neighbor to call a complaint in on it, either they're going to have to deal with that, or they're going to have to just say, "This is beyond what we need to have in our neighborhood," and maybe another neighbor can call it in or something, but if that property owner that's running short-term rentals is not being quiet during the night hours, you know, all of the different things that we've talked about in all of the meetings, then they need to not have a license. It's as simple as that. But I know that that's, it's hard for some people to call it in, but if it's serious enough, they should not have a license.
Thanks, Kevin. Tom?
Hi, Tom Palm. A couple final thoughts then. I, I agree that, I believe the, the county commissioners threw the baby out with the bathwater. I think there was a number of items in there that, whether you call them guardrails or you call them overreach, probably were a compromise that a lot of people find they came to after a lot of discussion. The intention all along, my understanding, has been to change the ordinance so as to bring more people under the umbrella so that they could be regulated. So what everyone's been struggling with is how to best achieve that. When the, when last year's proposal went to the commissioners, I think they were pretty clear in their, by their voting and by their opinions and by what they said, that they didn't like that. They thought it was too much overreach. So whether you agree with the, the makeup of the board of commissioners and who owns VHRs, et cetera, you're kind of stuck with them, at least until someone votes them out. So I guess what I'm asking is that, I'm hoping that this board can, with that kind of redoing the wheel again here and going back and starting to add a bunch of stuff back in when you know it's going to go to the commissioners and they're going to throw it back out again, and you've, again, nothing happens, to, to try and find the best way to come to a compromise where, yes, there are possibly some guardrails put back in that people feel are important without reaching whatever that threshold is where the commissioners say no, and they just throw it back out again. I, I don't quite know how that works, but hopefully that will be the approach, and maybe you guys can all go in the back room and, and duke it out. But that seems to me, in, in a practical sense, that's where you got to go, or we're just spinning our wheels. Lastly, in terms of the enforcement, I mean, that, that's kind of like, that's going back to the, the county and planning and zoning and everybody, yes, if you have rules on the, on the books, you ought to enforce them. How you go about doing that if you only got one person? I don't know, maybe you start assessing a lot of fines, you can hire someone else. But yes, a law that's not enforced is, is not really a law, and we certainly see that in a lot of different issues. So I totally agree that once you put this in place, there should be consequences. It's the only way the rules work. On the other hand, the rules need to be fair enough and inviting enough to get people to come in under that umbrella so that you can have some sort of jurisdiction over the Wild West. I'm glad I'm not sitting in your shoes, but hopefully this time we can get it figured out and get it figured out quickly and not kick the can down the road for another year.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Want to point out two quick things on what... Want to point out two quick things on what Tom commented on. First one be the two to two vote. We are running into that and Mr. La Croix knows that I voiced great opposition. I said, I indicated that I wasn't sure he really should abstain because he's increasing the jurisdiction that's being placed on his operation. And if he votes for the budget, he's the taxpayer besides, so what's the difference? But we're going to leave that up to Mr. La Croix to decide. But the second thing is you should know, and it wasn't part of the submission, that this committee, this final committee, and Rita was there, suggested that the addition in fees be distributed to the planning commission to include if they had to hire an additional part-time person just to assist in administering this ordinance. And there are part-time people probably doing for nothing. We, I don't think our counties looked enough at senior citizens or whatnot that would volunteer for part-time work and stuff like that. But that, I just wanted you to know that was not included in the submission, never was to the us or the, but that was their recommendation. I advised them as chairman of that, that fees, in fact, I've told you before, fees are the sheer control of the board of commissioners. They're in charge because they're responsible for the county budget. We can only make a recommendation or give them an idea. We're not in the fee business and neither are committees. So that's it. Time to decide on the motion. No one else wants to come up? Yes, ma'am. Emma? Now, this is going to be three straight now. Out. We're not going to let you have fourth time. Go ahead.
All right. So Emma Bennett, just one thought, and this isn't an idea on behalf of the association, but I just work a lot with organizations. I think a big thing here is education of the owners and the property managers. And just to queue in on one idea when we're looking at this again. Sioux Falls recently passed an ordinance where property, if you don't have a property manager license or real estate license, you have to take a two-hour class that you understand the guidelines and you get certified by the city of Sioux Falls. That's something that we could do, you know, there's a difference between, I think, requirements and guidelines. Guidelines, you know, are not something that you can really penalize, but we of course have a ton of guidelines that I think that we want to address. And once again, I keep saying, but make sure that we have good actors in the area, whether that's fire permits, off-road vehicles, parking requirements. I think all of those things notification to neighbors, you know, so if we want to do kind of an educational aspect to this, I think that would also kind of help bridge the gap of what is a requirement versus what is best practice. Sioux Falls, they have their own training, but they also gave approval for the South Dakota Multi-Housing Association for their training to also be accredited. And we could also as an association come up with a training that we could supply that information to show that there was an hour, two hours of professional development or training requirements in order to permit use of management or operating a vacation rental. So just thought there if there's any questions.
Do you, can I ask a silly question? Because you do work with them every day. Do you think that a house that's up for vacation home rental, so to speak, and that's a lack of a better term in Sioux Falls, is the same as a house that's available in
No, definitely.
County range of Mount Rushmore?
Yeah, no, no, no. I'm not saying that by any means. I'm not saying we would have the same, but we could apply the same process of requiring people to take.
Oh, I think you're correct about the process, yes.
Yes.
But how extensive, it, it's a lot of difference.
For sure.
Even for a family.
Right.
If the fam, if the dad goes, I found a place that's in our budget in Sioux Falls. However, we're going to have to drive to Mount Rushmore. That's a lot of difference. Or if you already live in Sioux Falls, you want to come to the Black Hills and have a vacation getaway within driving distance. Would you not concur?
Yeah, well, and I think to your point, you know, it wouldn't be nothing with what the requirements for Sioux Falls and the best guidelines for Sioux Falls. It would be very specific to what's going to work for the county. So everything that you, you know, say there's somebody who purchases that is in Sioux Falls and they get this credential to operate in Sioux Falls, we could have a specific Pennington County, you know, two, two hours every three years, I think is a very low level lift, especially for people that want to operate properly.
Have you guys contacted Rapid City yet? You know, they don't have any.
Yeah, we need to. Yeah. And I think that this is going to be really good framework, I think, for how the city provides their recommendations as well. So just, just a thought on that process, reiterating, once again, the association is here to help and make sure that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we come into compliance. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You have to introduce yourself for the record, please.
Kristen Bennett. It's been about a year and a half.
You bet, Kristen.
But to answer the question about have we contacted the city, I did meet with the mayor.
Did you?
And he's all in favor with whatever help the association can give when it comes to education.
The education side of it to give their citizens and their, their, what would I say, department some idea what the views are on these.
That and, and a professional association to lean back on in terms of liability. So that's what a professional association does. They, they license, accredit, educate so the government doesn't have to. So, so John Thune told us he would love to see the industry sort of regulate itself to whatever extent possible. So that's what we're trying to do in education as part of that. So Emma's correct, like there could be modules specific to Pennington County, specific to Sioux Falls, although they're doing their own thing. But yes, the city was very much like, how are we even going to do this? And we're over here saying we can help, kind of provide that layer of, like the buffer between, and I don't want to say liability, but like to take some of the heat off of the county, off of the city and say, the association sits here representing good actors.
Clearhouse.
To help, you know, keep the house clean, to push the bad actors out because they make us all look bad. They make it harder for everyone. So mostly I just wanted to say that yes, the city is in favor of help. We haven't gone any farther with that because this is a little more pressing right now, but any questions?
I'm sure that makes us all feel better because we heard plenty from actually citizens that came to our, that were, what would I say, testifying in behalf of city operations, not necessarily county and were concerned where we were headed.
Yeah, I mean, the association is not just like to help counties or to help cities or to help owners or residents, it's to help the entire thing function better, like, and, and every segment of this industry can give input onto what that means. You know, how it works is not a set formula. Every association is different in how it provides that value. Also the state, maybe the state being able to help you enforce. Because now they trace the tax payments that come to them and Airbnb lets you know. And the state lets you know if like, hey, you don't have a sales tax license yet the platform's collecting, you know, so there's got to be kind of a way to help. So if someone's operating an Airbnb and they don't have a state license, the state now notices. And they say, because I have a couple and they were both under one license. They're like, we'd like you to have two separate licenses so we can keep them separate. There's no reason the county couldn't do something similar or maybe even utilize the same system. The state is where that's how it's tracked. If you're paying taxes on it, you need a license and the state says so now. And now that's only in the last year they notice and they let you know how they want you to configure that. So I know it's been frustrating, but I mean, there's a lot of improvement that's been made and a lot of systems kind of starting to work together. So.
I just want to be clear too, we as a commission take testimony from our incorporated areas. In other words, Rapid City people speak on ordinances that we're talking about, Hill City people. And we've always done that. And I assume the board of commissioners do too. So just so it's clear, it's not saying that we don't listen to those, but we don't regulate them or administer.
Right.
Thank you.
Right.
I'd just like to agree with your comment about the small number of bad apples that create the whole group of problems. If we didn't have those, we wouldn't have anybody even talking about this.
Right, right. And the state association wants them brought in or out. You know, like be in and do it right or be out. We are not in favor of people operating in harmful ways, disruptive ways, illegal ways at all. That's not what a professional association does. It's like you help the industry be its very best. So anything else?
Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Mr. Joe?
Yes.
I appreciate the association stance on this. As a private contractor, it reminds me a lot of contractor licensing. You know, when, when you have a bad contractor, generally they're flying by night, they're under the radar, they're not licensed, they're not bonded, they're not insured, they're not following the rules because they can't sustain themselves long-term. They're, they're only doing as long as they can get away with it and then they're going to jump ship and go somewhere else. So this is bringing the short-term rental association or process more in line with some of that standard contracting issue of self-business regulation. So I do appreciate the comments and the thoughts and willingness to work with us to help find common solutions. Then second, unless we got comments on my comments, I'd like to ask another question of, of this body here. Should I amend my motion so to make sure that Kevin can be here for our next meeting?
Would be.
I would appreciate that.
He's asked that, that we do, and I would consider that Kevin's been involved this day one.
And I'd like to respect that. So I would like to amend my motion to continue to April 22nd.
Is that acceptable to me?
Sure, that'd be fine.
It's been moved and seconded to amend the motion to read April 22nd, continue to April 22nd. And I was going to bring up, we're beginning to backtrack and, and go over previously covered territory. I think it's time to bring it to the head. So anyone else want to speak on this before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you for all your comments. So what are you, you're going to take then the county board report?
Uh, we have.
Oh, by the way, we don't need an executive session again.
We have, we have agenda item eighteen.
Huh?
We have eighteen.
Oh, eighteen? Oh, sure. We got one more of the one pager. Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. The fees.
So, uh, Corey Sack of Urban Planner, item eighteen is ordinance amendment O eight twenty-four dash zero four. It's to amend section five eleven fees. And since the previous item was continued, staff would recommend to continue this item to the April 22nd meeting as well.
Good.
Second.
Moved and seconded to do, to continue this per staff's recommendation to the April 22nd meeting. Discussion from the audience, from the commission. Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Now we can go on. Brittany's here, so it's not going to be Jason do the next one. I'm sorry, I really lost, huh?
So item nineteen, we don't need it.
Correct. Nineteen is going to be, how we're going to handle that, or I was advised to handle it, if we do not need that, we do not need to make a motion because we're not, we have to make a motion just to go into the executive session. So assuming no motion is made, we are going to move on to item number twenty. Board report.
So Brittany Molitor, planning director, item number twenty is the county board report. The board of commissioners concurred with the planning commission's recommendations from the March eleventh, twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting.
Items from the public.
No public.
Items from the staff. How are you? The twenty-second, you think we're gonna, can I quiz you a little?
Sure.
You're, you have a good feel for these things. We're going to get more people in here on this again then? Do you think we're going to have a bigger audience?
It's possible. I think what staff is going to do is put together all of the comments that were made today and have that separate sheet again, and then the commission can go through those. So that if there's additional comments, then we can add to that and see if those are sections of the ordinance to update. So.
See, I'm going to paraphrase Kevin's kind of, I actually think if all the board of commissioners been present at the meeting, it wouldn't have gone this way. We wouldn't be talking about this again anyway. But that's my own feeling is that we've sat on this and it just flips back and forth. And it's done it kind of through the years. You've been here through most of it. Were you comfortable with the special use permit, the way it's supposed to be operated through the state? It's helping us?
Um, it's very similar to the licensing and I think what we'll do prior to the next meeting is put together maybe a chart that shows the differences so the commission can understand it. So if you do want to bring back the special use permit in lieu of the licensing, you can see the differences. So.
Chair, that's the way I understood it and it's still a streamlined process where they're not bringing it before us every time. It allows them the opportunity to pre-approve the checklist and, and, you know, accept the license fee.
You're headed right where that's why I wanted this staff. So you would like to see what she's talking about submitting for our April 22nd meeting. Is that correct through the membership?
To see the difference.
What you're talking about.
Right, what the special use permit requirements would be and what the licensing requirements would be. And then the statute, the statute that applies to special use permits.
Yes, that would be fine. You bet.
Thank you. That's all I was fishing for. Thank you. Items from the membership. I only have one and I'm going to make it brief. We were not the ones that appointed nor called for the committee that was put together in the initial, this time on this go-round. We were on the previous two. Had been run through the planning commission. This third one ran through the board of commissioners and reported to them. That's why I didn't show up because the committee report, I wanted to let you know why I wasn't at that meeting as well as I shouldn't have been. It was not mine to report. It was a committee that was established by the board of commissioners and their report went direct to them and they had the involvement of the planning commissioner and the chairman. I was chairman as serving on the planning commission, so I guided them. That's about all I did, never voted. The only thing I wanted to add was I sure would hope we send out letters or say thanks. Because those, that particular seven people that supported opposed, whatever they comment on, they did a, a, a very representative job. Our legal felt that, Brittany felt that, I felt that, Jason felt that. They struggled, they, they argued. They just did a really good job. And I feel they, we might have stepped on their toes a little because I don't see them, haven't heard from them. I think they're disappointed in all of this. So I hope that we write them a letter and say, don't worry about being disappointed. You guys did a great job, even if you think we didn't. So that was my only suggestion. I'm going to leave it go at that. And I don't have the right to advise to do that. So anything else? Hearing none. A motion adjourned would be addressed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank all of you.